Thank you, and good evening to all of us for this first meeting, board meeting for the month of December. We're going to run through the agenda, then have board reports, and then we have representatives from the MTA Long Island here to talk about Tunnel Street, and then we'll open up any other special comments that folks may have. But before we do all that, we have a special presentation today. We have our four-part soccer club chiefs here. Good evening, young ladies, and we meet in the 3rd. It's an end standing together for almost seven years playing. I think your first year, you may not have won a game, but you stuck to it. And through perseverance and hard teamwork, this year won the championship at the highest level of soccer club in Long Island. So we want to congratulate you. You're all very proud and amazed with what's come down from here. Caleb Caplano. Is it Noah Pina? Floyd Kim. Hannah LaFus. Anya McLean. Sienna McCree. You're too bold. I have a watchful look. Amanda Owen. Valentina Canaro. Francesca Truzzi. Aleah Peres. Alex Skinner. Victoria Bogus. Christina Bogus. And the team was led by Steve Bogus. Delcy Rook.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have small agenda? Run through, before we go through the agenda, does anyone have any questions, comments about items specifically agenda? I know there's a whole lead anyone. I'm supposed to be these two different.
Thank you, Lady Fitzgerald. I would ask one to be certain of the public work minutes of the 20 Nassau Street application and the regular water justice minutes both held on Tuesday, November 15, 2022, and the work session minutes held on Monday, November 21st, 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts payable as follows. General fund: $6,45,417.65. Pool fund: $2,152. Tackle fund: $107,580.74. For a grand total of $6,155,150.79.
I love my resolution. Any discussion?
President Conbani, everyone, trustee chair, trustee steward, trustee Longoboy, and mayor Fitzgerald. I would ask the board to approve or write by the request to use public facilities subject to receipt of certificate of insurance and CTC and Department of Health guidelines as presented.
I love that.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Local area?
I would ask the board to adopt a resolution to add school, state, linen signs in accordance with Chapter 96, 96, in the area designated as presented.
Any other resolutions? Any discussion?
Trustee Conbani, trustee chair, trustee steward, trustee Longoboy, and mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the proposal given in favor for their professional services to prepare, distribute, and file the annual 1095 Cs and the 1094 C forms for the IRS with your ending for December 31st, 2022 in an amount of $42,000 and authorize the village administrative design set proposal.
I love my resolution.
Second. Any discussion? All?
Trustee Conbani, trustee chair, trustee steward, trustee Longoboy, and mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to hire Kyle Mayford as a laborer in the public works department at a contractual wage of $39,264, effective upon approval of the Nassau County Civil Service Commission and medical drug and alcohol screening and a six-month probation every period.
All for resolution?
One second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to ratify the approval of RTA landscape architectures proposal for the Tulaberry pedestrian walkway project in the total sum amount of $10,925, which includes topical survey, design phase, fitting phase, and construction phase services and authorize the mayor or village administrative design set proposal.
I love my resolution.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'd just like to recognize that our legislator Andrew Frey is here this evening, and he did help us with the voting.
My pleasure.
Any other discussion? The floor.
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize a repair of the 2017 boat slave agenda which was caught in damage by a couple of works department on November 19, 2022, and supplement approximately $13,000, including the car, which includes the car original, although the car is still being repaired.
I love my resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? The floor.
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve Bill Reese's permanent status since he successfully completed his six-month probationary period in the public works department and approve him to the position of MAO training at a contractual rate of $42,436, since he received a CDO license subject to the drug and alcohol screening in Nassau County Civil Service Commission.
I love my resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to grant an official annual one-week five-day vacation allowance respectively to C.L.A. Go, the office manager of the building in public works department due to her outstanding service to the residents of the four-part effective immediately.
I love my resolution.
One second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye.
I would ask the board to grant the application for the special use permit for 20 Nassau Street subject to the terms and conditions set forth in their direct decision and resolution.
I love that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Trustee Conbani.
Aye.
Trustee chair.
Aye.
Trustee steward.
Aye.
Trustee Longoboy.
Aye.
And mayor Fitzgerald.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Paul. For now, we will look through board reports, and then we will start by Deputy Mayor Michael Livinghorne.
Thank you very much, Eric, and thank you all for coming out tonight. It's good to see you. I'd like to start out with our fire department, and also recognize our chief of department, Chief Dodson, who is with us tonight. She's thankful for coming. We continue to thank our four-part fire department for their continuing service to our village. A week ago, on one weekend day, there were eight calls, mostly rescued, in an 18-hour period from 1:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and many other days with multiple calls and very, very close sequences. They are always there for us 24/7. Recently, the department has responded to serious carbon dioxide calls at times of need. Please make sure that your fireplaces, boilers, and chimneys are cleaned regularly and maintained. Do not use equipment in your home which is gas-powered, so CO gases can build up quickly, are clear and odorless, and can endanger people and pests. Check and make sure your CO detectors are working too. As it's the holiday season, be careful with tree lights and house lights and candles. Make sure the wiring is in good condition, don't blow out sockets, order a live tree frequently, and don't leave burning candles unattended. We want all to enjoy a happy and safe holiday season. For the Department of Public Works, thanks to our DPW for making the holiday season come alive with our political village decorations and spectacular tree lighting festival. DPW regular village maintenance includes ongoing leaf collection, power repairs, and getting the salt fluids ready for winter. Stay tuned for DPW's announcement about an upcoming new improved recycling program featuring paper cardboard collection on different days and glass, plastic, metal collection to ensure separation for proper, proper, efficient disposal to recycling. For our conservation society, Centennial Gardens has now closed for winter, and we want to thank over 100 Boy Scouts of the Theater Roosevelt Council of Boy Scouts in Western Nassau, 4 through 4 and 482 from Flor Park, 223 from 8, 254 from New Heights Park, 267 from Roslyn, and 8 through 8 from East Williston, for conducting a massive November cleanup and organization of a large visible area of the garden. This was a whole volunteer operation, and the series of four-part conservation supplies, super volunteers, Taka Sexton, Tom Siskin, and others, Boy Scout coordinators, Brandon Pavlovi, and Katie Teong, both of Flor Park's 34, and all of the local theaters. This Boy Scout volunteer event also included the collection of cartons and cartons of food donated to the Our Lady of Victory Food Pantry just in time to thank everyone. Many thanks to our garden volunteers, young and older, new and far. And for our changers of commerce and our businesses, thanks at the holidays to our Flor Park Changer of Commerce, the Flor Park Children's Club, Our Lady of Victory, our Fire Department, and Santa for a spectacular celebration of the holidays at our village last Friday night's tree lighting and festival. Coming this Saturday at 4:00 p.m., we'll do the COVID Avenue Changers, and Village and Stuart Manor, providing featuring horse and buggy rides, Santa photos, wreaths, hot chocolate booths, and candy canes. Bring your entire family and your neighbors to celebrate the holidays on COVID this coming Saturday.
Thank you. Trustee chair.
Thank you. Police Department, with the holiday season in full gear, delivery of packages are steadily increasing. We are encouraging all residents to bring those packages as soon as possible to avoid any unfortunate events by firefighters. If you're going out of town for a period of time, please ask a friend or neighbor to kindly secure your packages. Analysis prevention can go a long way in this area. Please report any incidents to our police department at 516-326-411. For the building department, four projects that I mentioned at the last meeting, the library ramp and multi-purpose ramp are moving along well. The foundation of the ramp is expected to be complete within two weeks, and total completion will hopefully be happening in the early spring. But a multi-purpose ramp is about 50% complete and looks great. The dash of Lloyd's wall system has been ordered, and then the final surface coating will be applied in the spring when the weather gets warm.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee chair. Trustee steward.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'd also like to remind you to consider joining your civic association. They need once a month, there were four of them, information about them is available on the village website. It's a great way to stay current with village events. I'd also like to thank Our Lady Victory, the Children Women's Club of Flor Park, and our team for getting another amazing tree lighting event this next Friday evening. Also, thanks to the Flor Park Friday Department for bringing all their special guests to the delight of all of these residents. And clearly to DPW and the police department for keeping things running safely and absolutely. Trustee chair has stolen my thunder about our multi-purpose ramp. I like to talk about it, but whatever. I'd like to thank and congratulate the Flor Park Chiefs on their championship run. These are important memories that these young ladies have made and will continue to make, and to their parents, I know they're all gone, but I would say you will miss these days when they are over, even the rainy cold ones, you will miss them, so enjoy them, all. I would also like to announce to the pool that we are celebrating the 12 Days of Christmas this weekend next at our pool, where residents can purchase 2023 pool memberships at 2022 prices and get a very special gift. The hours of operation are on the website and on our Facebook page, so please go down to the pool building and ask Regina and Spineup for 2023 pool season. Our fields are closed for the season. Look for winter signups for programs in the pool building in the coming weeks. For the MTA and the 3TC, we continue to monitor ongoing work relating to the third track, and as always, we encourage residents to reach out directly to the MTA via the MTA.com, I'm sorry, contact@mta.info or by phone at 516-203-4955. It is an automated response if you ask for more options, and then comments and concerns will eventually get to a person. We are expecting some repair work on the platform, a lot of it will be stem member, so please just be aware of your surroundings. Some of us take very early trainings or come home, it's 4 o'clock, it's early, so just keep an extra eye out when you're on the platform, be aware of safety. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee steward. Trustee Longoboy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, and thank you everybody for being here. With respect to the Flor Park Library, construction is ongoing currently on the front of the building. There's been inquiries regarding is the library still open? The library is open and operating normally. The entrance is located in the library as well as the book drop in the back to the rear of the building by the Tulaberry side. So if you're looking for the access point, it's around in the back of the building, but it's on Tulaberry side. But the library is fully open morning, and everything is going as normal. Thank you for your patience during this process. A new museum pass has been added to the library, museum passes, the Lieutenant Michael P. Murphy Navy SEAL Museum located in West Sayville. It's a world-class, state-of-the-art facility highlighting maritime history. Those passes are available, you can reserve them at any time. Some upcoming library events and classes include the Empire Council Defense Driving on December 8th, Holiday ornaments for kids 3 through 5 with local artists Michelle Harris, Teen Cupcake Wars for grade 6 through 12 on December 16th, and the monthly Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, December 14th at 7:30. For the four-village studio, the new office computer as well has been upgraded to a more secure IT infrastructure to protect the studio computers as they completed. The next phase will include an upgrade of the server and on-air controllers. Mayor Fitzgerald recently recorded an installment of the mayor's report with Deputy Mayor William Brenneman, Superintendent of Buildings Rene Marcus. This discussion explained the downtown revitalization initiative in detail is the grant that we applied for last month. The village thanks the hard work of Rene Marcus and many others for this grant together. It's a very informative show on how the grant works, what it covers, and what our goals are for the grant. You can go to www.fourbs.org, click the "Watch Now" tab, and learn about the grant program. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Longoboy. Deputy Mayor from Long Island.
Someone I'd like to introduce also, along with Chief Dodson, we have our first assistant chief of our fire department, Chief Courtney Howland here. Thank you for your service, Chief.
Thank you. For my report, with regards to the police department, during the height of the COVID pandemic, the Flor Park PBA commenced an arbitration proceeding against the village, seeking double-time pay during COVID pursuant to the holiday pay provision of the blood devorg agreement between the village and the PBA. It was a disavowed position that the CBA holiday pay provisions are impotable and never triggered in this instance, and the PBA is claimed for a valid merit. The New York State Supreme Court, Nassau County, agreed with the villagers and enjoined the PBA's arbitration from the CBA. However, the New York State Health Division ruled recently that the merits or lack of merit of PBA's claim should be determined by an arbitrator and not the courts. Therefore, the village may need to arbitrate the PBA's claim that they entitled a conditional holiday pay during COVID. The village's position remains that the PBA's claim lacks a merit. We will continue to keep taxpayers' files, any future developments, or may occur, but understand due to the current obligation, no further comments is made in this document. Just follows with trustee Longoboy's four-village studio report. Please go online, watch it. It'll also be out on TV in early January, and please come to civic associations and give us some of your ideas, and we will be out in springtime to go further along with this and go on our ideas for having a vote with this if we don't get it this year. We're going to keep on trying, I would say. And with that, I'd like to end this portion of the meeting. If there's further motion.
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So I, most of the people here, I believe, are to hear about Tunnel Street. So I guess it was six months ago, we were apprised that the gate at Tunnel Street would no longer just be a pedestrian gate, it would be also used for particular construction or repairs. After having many discussions and letters with the MTA, inclusive of legislators in trade, Assemblyman Louis Salard, also advocating on behalf, a couple ideas were floated that were, one that absolutely turned out, was to use the new high park entrance. Then Superintendent of Public Works Rene Marcus came up with some other ideas on how to make the exit from the tunnel onto Tunnel Street more safe, and I believe at the back of the room, there was some schematics. The MTA, for the most part, has agreed to the schematics. There's some things that they don't want to go forward with. I asked Hecta Garcia, the senior director of external affairs, to come and explain to our residents why is there the need for the particular need, and why some of the things are acceptable and not acceptable in our policy. He's graciously here tonight to explain that, and we'll take a few questions at the end, but I would like to ask if the questions are correct and can these keep on towards this issue only. The village continues to work with 3TC and the Long Island Road, host of other new segments at the end of the third track project, continuing to work. So Hecta, if you could come up and give an explanation for the gate. Thank you, and welcome.
Greetings, everybody. So I'm just going to back up a little bit and talk about why do we need access at Tunnel Street?
Use the microphone.
Remember the third track project, the previous version that had been rejected?
Yes.
Oh, give me the.
I just wanted to start off with the main issue at Tunnel Street is we need access because of the damage construction behind that area. And I wanted to back up a little bit to explain why that is the case. As you guys, as residents recall, previous version of the third track project was one that was rejected back in like 2008 or so. They had required another track, another bay at the Flor Park Station. And what we had heard clearly with the community is that we did not want a big construction impact at Flor Park. Doing that would cause a lot of impact there. So with this new version of the project, one way to minimize the impact in downtown was to, you know, the Hempstead branch that comes from Hempstead to Flor Park is two tracks. And when it meets the current platform, those two tracks merge to those four tracks that are there. Essentially, we took one of those tracks from the Hempstead branch, and when it joins the Flor Park Station, we severed that one, and then that became the beginning of the third track going east of there. So then from the Flor Park Station all the way to where Tunnel Street is, essentially, it's safe, there's only one track, only one track is available for train service. From Hempstead, we have two-way service, so just east of Tunnel Street, we have what is called an interlock in there, which is a series of switches that allow trains to go back and forth, taking it from one track to the next. So that's what is built there, switches are automated, they have a lot of circuitry and other things to make it, power the circuitry to make it work. So from that area, that's what we need access. So we've heard that, you know, there's concerns at, by the entrance of the tunnel. The reason we need vehicle access is steel and some of this stuff that is back there is very, it's big, and it's, it's, it's not like a repairman coming to repair your refrigerator or your stove with a little toolbox. You know, raro stuff is very big, it's very heavy, steel is very heavy. So the workers that go to respond there, they need to get there by vehicles. One thing that was suggested was why can't we use, on the Flor Park side, by the, by the public works, a back entrance there? You know, why can't that area be used to access? So that was used for reconstruction, but along the tracks there, starting from that end, there's a duck bank on the ground next to the tracks. And that's why a lot of this wiring and stuff is there. So trucks from the other side can't get all the way through. Those type of vehicles will cause damage to the duck bank, that's why we can't use that for this. So that's why it necessitates using Tunnel Street to just to get in there. Another question we've heard is, you know, how often are we going to be there? For maintenance purposes, this is checked to make sure everything is working properly, about once a week or so, roughly, one every once in two weeks, somebody's going to go in there, just to check, make sure everything's working. The other times are going to be for emergencies. If there's a broken wire, rail, or a switch or stuff, or something like that, then we may have to respond to fix something. Essentially, everything, everything there is pretty new, so we're not anticipating anything like heavy construction happening anytime soon. So really, the access is for maintenance, make sure that everything is working, and to respond to any emergencies.
So the schematic shows that when you come out of the tunnel, there'll be a 12-inch-high curb with bushes around it that will force people who are walking through the tunnel to go slightly left and then head up on Tunnel Street. Actually, one thing we did ask, to explain, we asked if we could put bollards, removal bollards for fresh day, so that would be an extra hurdle that a worker would have to get through if they come on the wall, they visit, and just the smaller truck is there, or they jump the curb.
So, but why, we don't support putting bollards?
Yeah.
I mean, essentially, it's like saying you have a fire truck, and you're going to put a bollard or a penitent or a police vehicle and make them slow down to respond to emergency. When we're going there, you know, a lot of times it's going to be for emergencies, so that's why you have to put bollards and that exactly. so that's why you have to bollards and not expect it.
Excuse me?
So, hold on, do you want, do you want any questions out from the...
I, I...
Hold on, this is what's here, it's almost there. Yes. Is there anyone on the board with any questions for the Trustee?
You just said something about not expecting big construction there anytime soon. That, can you clarify that? Because that sounds like big construction is coming.
No, no, no. What I mean was, that access was used for the building, what was there, that would be heavy construction. Everything there is, is there, is new, so we don't, we're not, no, that's going to be there for decades, so we're not planning, there's no plans to have to do any major work there. So really, if something breaks or something has to be fixed, that's why we're going to need access to there.
And we will get a heads up if you were coming on a regular scheduled visit?
Uh, well...
If you know you're coming next Thursday, would the MTA be willing to give us a heads up that you're coming next Thursday to work?
The notice will...
Not in an emergency.
So, I mean, when, when guys get dispatched to go check on something, unless something that happens, the volunteers get it for that, so I can't promise that I'm going to tell you every single time a vehicle is going to show up. What I can say is, if we know we're going to be there for any extended periods, that we're doing, you know, that, that we know in advance it's going to be there for extended periods, that we can let you know.
Okay.
So you mentioned in case of emergency, the bollards will slow down, your response to that, but you're still going to have to open that gate. I assume that gates will be locked, so that gate's going to have to be unlocked, which means the truck's going to have to operate in under two to three seconds, you will do a bollard, so you wouldn't have much of an impact.
And if trucks are responding in an emergency to that street and speed is a factor, that means they're coming through our other streets and neighborhoods rapidly get there?
No. You know, we don't have sirens on our vehicles, if they have to get there, as they get there, I'm just saying that it's, it's, they're responding to, you know, let's say to the railway, if something horrible happened, they have, they have to get there, they have to access.
I mean, I do discuss any progress after that, because I personally do follow something that's now is to be...
Excuse me? You all could turn in that...
This is one of the second...
Yeah, but wait a minute, I'm just saying...
This is one of the second, please. Does anyone else on the board that has a question for this investigation?
I just want to state publicly that prior to the start of the construction and the work here, the representation was that everything would be, would be returned to the way it was. And so that's part of our concern, is that the representation was, go back to being a pedestrian gate, and now, just a few weeks ago, it's not, with very limited safety structures in place. So that's, that's, personally, that's my big concern, and I know that's a concern of a lot of our residents, is the misrepresentation and the fact that because we had no prior notice and it wasn't in the original documentation, we now have to go through, you have to jump through all these hoops to find out the real information, and to find out that these things are happening when a truck shows up on the street.
Part of that was just because design building, things were designed, and, you know, the project team was taking the lead and communicating things. As, as, as stuff is being completed, we turn onto the railroad, then shifting to, you know, the railroad has to operate, they have to maintain, and then, you know, armies were, so there was a disconnect there.
There's, it was, it was a large disconnect, I would agree with that.
It wasn't, what I'm saying, it wasn't like a intentional thing, trying to survive against it, it was just a disconnect.
All right, so if we discuss it, I would appreciate it if you don't lose sight of the safety of residents, and I think the bollards will go a long way in putting people in mind. Anyway, so, anyone in the room has questions for this investigation? If we can keep one to the issue of MTA visibility? Yeah, if you can.
Sir, I have a few questions. What specifically would you deliver for this area through this proposed gate? I have 32 years of track law, and worked many derailments, constructing jobs, and 99% of the times, we delivered equipment on a work train with a rail car on it, a crane on it. So what specifically are you referring to when you say you're going to need trucks going in and out of there specifically?
Thank you.
Can you be a signal, a signal person with like a bucket truck that has to go check some wiring, or, you know, checks, check those things? All the infrastructure they did was support the entire, you know, so it's multiple departments, I was just trying, it's a signal, it's cars.
It sounds like a major issue. When you have a bucket truck, you check the wires on the other, other path, and the in-game market was, you mentioned large pieces of steel, and I think specifically like the name of any one of these possible items to deliver. I don't, I don't think the trucks would be able to deliver a 30-foot rail without blocking up all the street, and maybe not even make them turn. I'm being specific, you'll be a gentleman, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm not a track guy, so I'm not an engineer, so the specifics, I'm speaking for a general term, you know, there's different railroads, you have to get access to them.
I'm not being prepared for cheers to this law, I think you should have something else here. But if I have a specific question, and I'm asking you, how, 30-foot rail would be able to be on a truck, make that turn? I don't think you can, and I think the need for this speed is a balance, and it takes , it's only a fair, but he's a mayor, and I have several examples of that, but I...
No, I, I want to skip this topic, because other people may have some other questions, but, I mean, this, other, other values.
I'm not satisfied with this answer, I don't think all of my...
Like you said, he's got a, he has a track, or he needs somebody here with a track and pole and shaking.
Well, I can get you, I can provide to the owners a list of the different vehicles that I can do, because I'm right at the moment, but I can get back to the owners.
Thank you. This is Lynn.
All right, I, I'm just going to be real quick, I, I don't know, we, all of us that live in that part of town, we, I don't want to rehash all the stuff, but you might not be aware of this. In July of 2021, we all went to a meeting, and we had the representatives from the railroad explaining what was going on back there, because none of us were really sure what was going on. And we were told that the road for the work and all the structures that were, were all temporary and were all going to be removed. Meanwhile, there's several, like housing, garages, I don't know what they are, temporary buildings with equipment or whatever is needed there. I don't, the problem with the trust in our community with the railroad is because we were all lied to. At a meeting by all your officials, and we're, can you, I help you with who it was that was there?
I think it was 3TC.
The 3TC, and there was also a woman from the MTA that hit Zoom on the screen talking to us, and they all adamantly told us, oh, no, we're, why are you driving pylons? Why, what is going on? And they all, you know, we knew a switch was coming, we didn't know we were going to be all these, whatever. So my point there is only that it's hard to trust when we were all lied to, and a few weeks later, all this stuff is being built, and come on, this has to be a plan that people knew about. So that's the trust issue that you have and yammer. Now, aside from that, to an outsider in that community, on Wolf Town Tunnel Street, it's a dead-end street with like two houses on it, but you have no idea how well-used that street is by all the children in this community. And with all those kids that were here for their award earlier, everybody's kids have grown up, and even some of the adults who have grown up, I didn't grow up here in Flo Park, but my children were raised here. Our kids in the summertime, everyone between Tulip Avenue, no, actually, even the other side of Tulip, between Plainfield and Culver, that whole square, that's access to our community's rec center. That's where our kids in the summer all, all learn to swim, they all take swimming lessons. As they become teenagers, they're, they work there as lifeguards, as lifeguard instruction. There's summer camps, there's tennis camp, there are all kinds of sports activities throughout the year. There's soccer practice, there's baseball practice, there's league games. Now, you know, in this same age, parents, we're all working, once our kids get to a certain age, they're walking over there with their friends. I want to say second grade, third grade, my kids were walking over there with their friends. In the morning for morning sports in the summertime, they'd have a packed lunch with them, then they'd head over to the pool for their swimming lessons. This is, is an activity of the summer of all our kids, and then throughout the year, there's the hockey rink now, there's all these different activities, and the kids, it's like a way of going to side street. And you can't imagine, you're going to send your seven-year-old kids, like, crossing a major street like Plainfield, which now, because of the new arena, is crazy traffic in the evenings, you know, and even, that's just one example, but throughout the day, it's a busy street, Plainfield. But Tunnel Street, coming down, I know your kids would come down any of these side streets to go through that tunnel. They come on their bicycles, they come carrying all their ball bags, all this stuff. So I don't think that you realize as an outsider, if you see that street, you don't think it's a big deal, it's a huge deal. Because now, all of a sudden, we have to have adults, you know, walking out with our middle school kids, or driving now, or, you know, all this type of thing. It's the quality of life here, that rec center, anybody who raises kids in Flo Park, that's a really big deal, that whole rec center area. If you walk over there, you'll see how huge it is, it's amazing. And you go there on a summer evening, it's, it's a beautiful thing that we have, and it feels going to be hugely impacted by trucks coming and going. And my suspicion of you is that we're, this is going to be like an electric gate, that someone's not even going to get out of a car to open, or, you know, this just, you know, even the workers, they're careless. You know, we hear them, they're working, they're just throwing stuff around, they're cursing, just what went on during the project with the people who live over there experience on Tunnel Street, like disrespect for the neighbors there. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
If you'd like, I'm, I'm, I'm going to give it a little bit of introduction for Acta. Acta's very familiar with football, he's met us at Tunnel Street a number of times, and he's been here throughout the whole project, and he's been here before, so he does understand some of that, but, yeah, it's just him and I, and the entire PBA, so. And if someone else?
I want to say something. I lived on Tunnel Street, right across the project. This whole proposal was never put to us when it first got out, okay? So that's number one, we're like there. Number two, the trucks that come down are way over the weight limit. I had a pipe that broke underneath. The kids coming forever, Mr. Van Rood, you almost got hit by a truck, because they did not have a flare. Every day, I go out there and tell them, where's the flare? Nothing. So don't tell me this is going to be safe, and then you say now, like, turn your day, you're going to have more trucks coming down. The weight limit cannot take anymore on that street. We are tired of being lied to and ignored, it's not going to happen anymore. You could go through the new High Park just as well as you can come through this. This is our street, the quality of life is not safe for anybody. We can't even enjoy our backyards, nothing. My old son was ruined for the last two years. Not only that, what does, is it going to take for a kid to be killed coming through there? Are you going to wait for that? Are you going to have that on your mind? Or is the state going to worry about it? No, I don't think so. I want that stuff. That gate does not belong there. It's a traffic area for young kids to touch, or if you're going to have a death yet, it will be on your, your mind, not on your...
Thank you. Anyone else in the building? Just, anyone? No, no, it's just Acta, I'm going to... Acta, most of the people live around, it's outside of the...
I'm a, 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 I'm
calm and it's...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, you want to take a question or two from you?
Maria, Q.
Maria? Yes, she needs on you? Hi. Yes.
Okay. So I was listening to what people have been saying about the Tunnel Street entrance or their reconfiguration of it. I myself am a fifty-year member of Forest Park, I grew up here, I have a family here, and I have to agree with the public in saying it's a safety issue. And I believe that it's not perfect, but would you say that if you can't put it closer on the stuff, is that what you're saying?
Do you have a question? The question is, did you say the railroad could not come in through Forest Avenue with trucks instead of using the vehicle?
The subjugals can have full access from that side. They only use us partial access.
Did you have a...
I can manage the rail or check up or whatever goes around here, it must be done. My thoughts would be that can't be whether it's by...
The materials that need to come in, they cannot be brought in by train, as opposed to using a vehicle.
Some stuffs can, but it's, it's mostly the people that are going to respond, they're driving up and if they use the other way, they're gonna have to stop and then can't carry stuff a distance to get to where they have to get to. So it's not enough of giving access to get, to get access to where they have to get to.
It's needed to get the most, as I was mentioning, it's needed to get the most direct access to the site.
Okay, but we're getting around that section, and we need to be able to see the area, get out of the area, but like the second person said, yes, we're kids who come down on bikes, so if they're down that way, I feel like it's hurt, um, that force, and then I look down, they're not...
Mary, just to clarify one thing, schematically seen on Zoom and it was handed out, that was approved and that will go forward with that piece. Okay, so it will slow down a little bit.
It looks like the change is so we can slow down, is it moving up down the ramp?
That's correct.
Is that...
Yes, yes.
And it looks like there's some down, people get lost, but it's the...
Yeah, we'd have to make it so they can seal it.
It's a safety issue, the case and the law, yeah, this is very so, yeah, yeah, so yeah. I don't think, no, but I'm glad you did this. Um, because more than that, they're still, they're still, and they're really concerned about this, they're annoyed with this, with the trucks, where it's not safe and the production of trucks is not really safe, and this is a safety issue, they're very concerned. Uh, and so my question to you is, what's plan B?
What's plan B?
At the moment, there is no plan B.
It is what you see on your screen and, you know, I've said it all the time, I think the balance that if Landor or Preski would, you know, take peace of mind to the residents that the truck comes, they'll have to slow down before they could recover to go over.
Okay, and I...
I would direct that back to Mary.
I don't understand that. When the truck comes, they need to stop, I just don't think they have to leave, uh, you know, whether the truck is moving, stop, sort of there, and the trucks are just right there, and that there.
The goal would be, the goal there would be to get the trucks to stop and slow down, slow down, and then go, and obviously realize the surroundings and know that there's a tunnel, the people coming through, as opposed to just coming down Tunnel Street and jumping to curb and going in.
I agree, uh, if they're trying to slow down, I think they could go as fast if they could, because they want to. Yes, it is. Um, I'm very, very concerned, uh, plus if you're also adults, someone's told, well, I don't know, I don't know.
All right, thank you, Mary. Uh, is anyone else on Zoom, Tony?
Vanessa, access.
I love Vanessa, like Vanessa, can you just say your name?
Sure. If you're able to kind of...
Yes, you can hear, I can hear.
Uh, so I think that's everything I want to order, I'll just ask anybody, I've answered before, um, I'm a very current person, I do what I dealt with, this project for a while, and the serious problems, and I've been there, uh, for reasons, so, and then there's the project, then there's the long way back to the way it was, which was below and no making, and that is not happening. Uh, so you should know there are big changes from my experience, but I've written a very good traffic study, and just, uh, there's always alterations, and a lot has been rid of people involved in this project. So, I'm not sure anyone's studying on pedestrian traffic in our town, that tunnel, have the MTA or NPA, you know, did, and after, is that a concept of what it has been occurring all over the year?
I don't think you could answer that.
No, there's been no official studies about the traffic, pedestrian traffic at that location.
There was no, there was no studies for pedestrian traffic on this, yes, yes. It's noise. Are all children not worthy of a report? There's study.
It's true.
I have fifteen questions.
Have you had difficulty, uh, there, you know, on recent hours on this area, what they can do, have you been...
Has the MTA police done any impact or looked at the area to see if it's safe to live in the home?
No, I think so.
No, no, that's okay.
Is the last one on, um, and I'm sorry, but that doesn't have the whole story, because the board is there, well, two MTA officers were there, uh, and they discussed with us that key, uh, and we all, that it was quite safe to have a safety, and we said that it should go back to that key. Is the representative aware of that, and could anybody have before identified that that was a threat?
Trust, former trustee Chang is in the audience, and he is shaking his head, yes, he agrees with what he said. Are you aware of that?
Aware of what?
Is the, is the MTA representative aware of a meeting that occurred months ago with two, two MTA police officers, trustee Chang, former trustee Chang, about where the MTA police said that it's not safe and that it's, go back to the question.
What they, what they, may I?
Yes, sure.
What they said was they were gonna take it back while, while the way it was laid out originally, it was not safe. Now, with this new devised plan, they may, they may have reviewed this and it looked like it was safe as far as the MTA's concerned. I'm not sticking up for what this is, what's going on here. I will stick up for Hector, because he's always been helpful to Forest Park. But that is true, that we did have MTA police there and they reviewed it and they said the way it's configured in the past was not safe. This new configuration, I don't know if they weighed in on, but they were there.
So Hector, could you take that back to the installation and they want to take a revisit?
I have the police and our safety department give an assessment, I'll report back.
Okay.
How could a truck have happened if they have never studied the pedestrian traffic that goes in and out? How could anyone say that it's safe if they haven't given it priority at the time and the attention that it has to be reserved? Some very important, plain change in conditions that's been made without any sort of prior information.
Hector, perfect and all, the MTA is all there for the people who live in the tunnel, extremely highly, Hector, that an actor save the MTA is aware of that?
Well, we're that people, a lot of the tractors use it, especially in summer.
It's just like, we've heard so much, three hours, and then, you know, more coming in and out, it's been so long for you, and they still have some part of it, just helping watch, like walk, uh, or, they don't have any...
I think it's a given that the MTA realizes this is significantly frequently used from the record. Yeah, he should have said those, but they agree that they understand.
And I'm sure there are, there are, I don't know, several that you don't want her, but the majority of the child, especially children, also want to get their head attached to their front end down. So kids want to, um, to get their, um, to get their, um, and, uh, and, uh, people to talk to their, like, their standing child, and they're allowed to be children. Walking through, that's very walkway. Everybody here, this is common sense, so we're like, this is gonna ask everybody to have their head, and everybody that's going to say, okay, this is, this way from the left of their hands, and unfortunately, it's probably gonna be kids. Okay, really, I want to ask this, this is common sense, this is a terrible idea, it is a tragedy, and Forest Park hasn't afforded to empty jack.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone here who would hold another question, comment different than Tunnel Street? I see our senator-elect, Mr. Cansonary, Fitzpatrick, Senator-elect for the ninth district, and I'm here because this affects a very beautiful, small town community. Village, you know, the village of Forest Park is what we all want for our hometown. Beautiful, kept homes, kids running in the streets, family oriented. The MTA unfortunately has a bad reputation for not being a good neighbor. And I think that has to change. And although I, I understand that you've been a very good liaison between the MTA and this village, I think it's incumbent upon you to bring back to the MTA the strong message that you're hearing tonight from these residents. They are getting involved, they are here taking their time to spell out for you alternatives and things that are of concern to them. And even though the MTA has the right to go forward and do whatever they want, it doesn't mean that they should do it. And if they want to be a better neighbor that's supported by residents, they need to listen to these concerns and implement a better plan. Because the residents have come up with alternatives that would make them feel better. And I hope that you will do your best to advocate for the people that you are interacting with, the mayor, this board, the residents, to do a better job to make sure that this project is done safely for a beautiful community that wants to stay that way. Nobody wants to look at that unsightly fence, nobody wants to fear for their kids who are walking to the park, because that's what the village of Forest Park has built. They are a family community, and I hope that you will listen to this message and do your best to do a better job for them because they deserve it. Thank you so much, Mayor, for the opportunity. Thank you. Yes, one more question, uh, two. Mr. Madden and, uh, a lot of, oh, and this is great, okay, we think, read them.
Sure. Mayor?
You have a question? John, you can have a president on the legal first, so Madden and...
Thank you very much. I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, if we agree that the proposal is unsafe, but also the context of your laws now about it being, you know, used and especially in summer, our program is over six hundred children, um, the soccer program uses that facility, play football uses that facility all year round. There is organized sports in that rec center and lots and lots of people in and out of that rec center and lots and lots of people using that tunnel. So I don't want any misconception that it is a, you know, seasonal issue and the concept that people would, you know, on railroad would be responding to emergencies without acknowledging our police department, as heads up to close the tunnel or other, other safety features, it's insane to me. It's just a terrible idea that they would just on a square fly down with some sort of emergency on their mind. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you for the lovely written on behalf of this on our residents on the spot.
Sure. So I'm John Duprey, I'm county legislator in this area, and thank you, Mayor, trustees, for inviting me tonight, thank you, residents, thank you, Senator-elect. Really, I walked Tunnel Street with trustee Avagno at her request, at trustee Stewart's request, and also then walked to the entrance to the county recharge basin on Stewart Street. Many of you know where that is. And so, I wrote a letter two months ago to Mr. Fasano, proposing plan B, which was basically to give access to the railroad on county property, county recharge basin number one twenty-one. And I renewed that offer, I have conferred with the Blakeman administration, and we are prepared to study that, to allow access. The county has provided a one-year use permit to the railroad, and the railroad has been using the recharge basin, not Tunnel Street, for access for the last year or so. Tunnel Street access was supposed to be temporary during the third track construction. The access via Stewart Street would avoid a vehicular gate at Tunnel Street. I put that in my letter to Mr. Fasano in October, and his response was to express concern that the area along the tracks on the recharge basin might not be wide enough and might not support the vehicles. So I conferred again with the administration and with our commissioner of DPW, who assured me that the county is willing to study modifications to the recharge basin to support the railroad's equipment, so that you would not have to bring the vehicles in via Tunnel Street, instead you could bring them in through Stewart Street and the county property on the recharge basin. So I would just ask that you take this offer back to the railroad, that plan B be studied and that a serious, a serious look be taken at avoiding a vehicular access gate at Tunnel Street. That's my request as the county legislator for the area. And the other thing is, and I did say to Mr. Fasano, I understand things change, circumstances change, however, before the third track project was begun, there was a commitment made to the village of Forest Park that this access gate for vehicles was temporary and that it would be restored to its pre-third track condition. Now, I know things change, but you know what? Sometimes a deal's a deal, and you just gotta suck it up and do it in a less convenient way. It's not impossible, it's just less convenient. And I think the concerns of the residents are valid, and so, Mr. Ossie, that's my, my humble request to you, if you would take that back to the people at the railroad. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I guess one last question, comment, upon Mike Palata, member of our school.
Thanks for being here tonight. I'm Mike Palata, I'm on the Forest Park Belt Road's Board of Education, but tonight, I'm just here as a dad and a resident of Forest Park. I have, I have two little girls, they ride their bikes in their scooters all the time. I'm, we've gone through that tunnel many times, because I'm, I'm concerned if we open up that gate, it's just an accident waiting to happen. And like you've heard from some of our other residents, there are hundreds of kids that use that tunnel in the summertime, it's a very popular spot, there's not good sightlines for someone in a truck coming down that ramp, and we need to, we need to do better. If there are other options, if there's another access point, or if there's a way to put something around that gate to keep those drivers from coming down and hitting our kids, we, I would encourage you to go back to the MTA and look at those options. I think, you know, that there, it's unfortunate, we have hundreds of kids that live in this village that use that tunnel, they can't be here tonight and line up and we can't hear their voice, we have a responsibility to look out for them, and when one of our neighbors asks you if our kids are important enough to do some kind of study or analysis, no answer is the wrong answer. You can choose, so you need to go back, do some homework on this, look at other options, you know, we have a responsibility to our kids and we need to protect them and keep them safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. One more question, comment?
I would just like to make you thank, honoring us, to come and speak to the residents.
Oh, one more, Mr. Cansonary, is it quick?
This, I'm Dennis Cansonary, I'm the colonial guard, it's, uh, Forest Park, which is one of the main, uh, community sections that use this tunnel entrance. And do you know how long this tunnel began in operation, uh, undisturbed before the third track? Do you know when it was, when it was first done?
He doesn't know, you know, since you know.
Probably with facts or...
If probably with facts, then elevated by sixty, seventy years ago.
Well, actually, I spoke with one of my neighbors, and she, she wanted original names of Forest Park, she looked at this tunnel, it was in the nineteen forties, and as a matter of fact, there were some incidents that took place, uh, in the forties, of kids at that time, uh, getting hit by, uh, traffic, injured. What I'm concerned about is that, but what this tunnel, uh, it prohibited all the children and residents of our area, access to, uh, later on, the public preparation center. Uh, I don't think, uh, that any parent should have the choice, the option, choice of, of having to drive their children to the, to the preparation... having to drive the children, uh, to the, to the recreation center or risk, uh, railroad, uh, this, 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 uh, this, this area. Uh, a couple of questions. Is, is security camera going to be placed and will be monitoring these different cameras?
So, Dennis, all the work that's on that screen is being committed, is being phased out of community development.
Uh, and, and, and as far as, uh, the Village of Floral Park, the Village of Floral, does the Village of Floral Park now, or in the future, have any access to the, to the beatbox?
I, I just think, uh, no, to the railroad, right? I mean, that will be discussed with the railroad police.
I can't, so, I can't say, uh, that, uh, the, uh, the, uh, responding to that, keeping the safety. I just think, uh, this, uh, you know, this, 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 this proposal, opposed to being this temporary, uh, it's just, uh, uh, I, I, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, or, uh, giving a viable, reasonable alternative, at the end. And I also, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, uh, members, who said, we, we, we discovered, if you have, you need to, uh, 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 that area, and, and actually, that, uh, the, the, uh, for decades, so, thank you.
Hey, trustee Lomavani?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on something you had mentioned. You said part of this was adapting because of police equipment, that they couldn't get all the way in from the other side. Have they looked at moving any of that equipment that would open up the, uh, ability to be able to come in from that side?
I mean, it's, 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 it's a duck bag that's, uh, a few hundred feet long, that's like I said. It, it's all the, it supports the whole, the switch.
Okay, so it's not individual pieces that could be possibly.
No, it's all on the ground, duck bags, all of them.
And one last question.
I have a question, I have some comments. Um, and first of all, I agree with trustee Chang, with trustee Chang completely. Um, after you have been so helpful to us through the years, and we've worked with you on a lot of issues that you helped us solve, and a lot of them involve the safety of our residents and our children, including the bridge over South Tyson, the bridge over Plant Field, and helping us redirect traffic, um, and crossing guards of revenue, you, you provide the placement so that we could get our children to jump on this job, so that they can home safely while that bridge is being, uh, in construction, which seems to me actually a far less dangerous situation than the one that's happening now. I can't believe we're here discussing this. On its face, the idea of having a dead-end street that's small, that's narrow in our village, with pedestrians, children, all kinds of people coming through a tunnel that leads into that street, I don't know why the railroad did not find that undesirable in the first place and rule it out, and why we even continue talking about it. I first heard about this, I think we did from Mr. Bambrick, around September eighth, ninth in that area, and I was like, oh, that's what happened. They would, they would never do that. Why are they proposing that? The fact on top of that, we have other alternatives, um, which include, thank you, uh, legislator Duprey, both your proposals and offering what the county can do. We have, for those of you living on Covert Avenue, I'm sorry, but Covert Avenue is there, it's a main street. If we're talking all about emergencies, you're never going to handle an emergency on Tunnel Street, neither will a fire or a police department. Covert Avenue would be the place to do that. Um, what's ironic in this whole situation is that the railroad has a very intense, um, purposeful safety program for the children or our schools. That safety program includes experts from the railroad and the MTA who go in and speak to our children about staying away from the tracks, stay away from the tracks for their bicycles, stay away from the railroad when, when they're working on the railroad. And now, we have a proposal that seems like the railroad intends to go through with it with putting our children in direct access of the vehicles that they've been told to stay away from, from your education team. Um, I would, one of the suggestions I would make is, who's ever making this decision so stubbornly, send them off to talk to your education team and find out the law, the reasons they shouldn't do it. But the fact is, there are two alternatives. Being just one is so dangerous, so incomprehensible, that you would put children and our, and our, our residents in this situation of these kinds of vehicles of that size coming into a street on top of it to deal with emergencies. I, I just, I, it's, it's, I can't believe that it's not obvious to everybody, including the, or, 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 MTA, that you can't do that. So, what we need to do now is, if you absolutely have to access those tracks, we have to start looking seriously at the pros and cons of using the piece that, uh, legislator Duprey was talking about. It may be undesirable to the railroad, but it can be more desirable than doing what you're planning to do and looking at Covert Avenue, and that may have its drawbacks too, but they have to be considered, it has to be transparent. We have to know, because you are right now, not you personally, but the railroad is right now making decisions which are really, really dangerous. How do we get that across? We can't have this. It's got to be a better way, and there is a better way. We just have to take the time with you to explore that, and we'll make ourselves accessible at any time, as will anybody in this room, as will our senator-elect, as will our legislator, and anybody around here. This cannot happen. It's ridiculous, it's dangerous, and shame on the railroad for letting me get this far.
I can thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate partnership with the fellow to hearing, you know, some alternatives. Anyone has any question, comment, or, or, anything else? Can I hear a question?
Separate, separate items, um, regarding, uh, the billboard that's visible to residents on the west end. Many of the trustees on the board are aware of it, um, in the last, very large circle of the, uh, uh, here, to the residents, uh, of, uh, the, uh, mine. What's interesting about this, in the other way, the residents like what happens to the Village of Floral Park, investigate legality, um, on the side of saying that it's possible to build, uh, MTA property,